Well, open the meeting and start. You must be Pete, huh?
Yes.
Hi Pete, I'm Christine. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Pete Rochepell for the record, for Waste Management.
Waste Management.
Oh, thank you.
I think you guys have my card. You want another one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll take another one. I'm sure there's nothing on yet. Hi Ronnie.
How are you, Pete?
I'm well, sir. You have my card, but you want it?
Yeah, I got your card.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Okay, so I guess you get to talk about a new compactor.
Yes, and...
No, go ahead.
All right, thank you again. Pete Rochepell, Waste Management. I got a phone call from Ronnie about the town. I guess one of our maintenance gentlemen came to look at an issue.
Grady.
Grady came to look at an issue at the transfer station. And conversation ensued in regards to a pre-crusher. It's basically a compactor, but it's a beefed up compactor that will crush a lot of big things like couches, drums, and crates, and furniture. Which, then I got a phone call to stop looking at it. That's why I'm here, to answer really your question that I have, pricing. What this costs. These are very expensive.
And that's something you'd be using just for the demolition? Is that what we're...
Correct. And it can also be used too, in the event of the compactor goes down for your MSW, middle of the day. I can't get someone there. Everyone's busy, even a third party that we sub out.
We can switch over.
You can switch over to that. Last, you'll have a backup, so you don't have to shut down. So it can be used as a backup. I would primarily use it for bulky material, what's really intended to be used for.
How's that going to affect cost?
On...
Well, say, we go for, you do, we have had breakdowns before where we had to put regular trash in, MSW into recycled.
Right. It's, we say maybe...
And we ended up getting charged for it.
Yeah, it's, you're getting charged with the, what your MSW rate is per ton.
Okay.
So, bye.
But then we lost also, you know, whatever part of that recycle it was in.
Correct. Again, it happens in emergency situations and...
Yeah, and they got charges as...
Again, an alternate, I think we discussed this too.
We do whatever we have to, so we don't have to close the door.
Yeah, and the other option too is you could throw, you know, keep a spare 30-yard open top there in the event that comp, either one of them goes down. At least you have a backup to place either recyclables or your trash in there. You know, again, it's a piece of machinery, you know, cars, everything. It's gonna break eventually, especially with the wear and tear, its intended use.
We're probably, being open last days, we've also made the amount of rubbish that comes in on the days we're open more intense. Higher amount. So therefore, if we do have a situation like that, it's...
Right, right. But, again, this could be used as a backup. Now, again, I, wasn't me that said, hey, you guys should look at a, you know, a pre-crusher. This, I was getting asked to, you know, from the town, the conversation happened. This is what I did. I put together... I guess I have one for the audience, sorry. But they're expensive pieces, and I have two options. There's two different type of, different variations. But there's two basically different models of these. The Marathon RJ 450, which is really a four-yard hopper. That's the size of the hopper that you throw the stuff in. That has a 20 horsepower motor. The other one, option two, is a little bit bigger one. It has a five-and-a-half cubic yard hopper with a 30 horsepower motor. But as you can see on the pricing, these are quite expensive pieces of equipment. An outright purchase, just for the top option's over $49,000. And on top of it, then you'd have to get a receiver box that hooks on to it, like your compactor now on, or the recycle ore, if you would need that. With a renting, still expensive, $9.45 on the first option, that does include the container, the receiver box for the compactor. Includes everything up above, the installation, guide islands, all the nuts and bolts, and the controls and everything I have.
Do you have to pay for rental of the box?
The rental of the box is included in the rental of that rental price, yeah. This is just some information that kind of tells you what this pre-crusher can do. And it's a beefy, I guess I like to call it a compactor on steroids. It's, it does its job. Now, the benefits with one of these is obviously less trips with your bulky stuff. Because you throw a couch in there, a regular 30-yard, you have a lot of airspace.
But I got it's per tri, I mean, we, scale away, per trip is gonna be...
Correct. It's a trade-off, right? But you're getting less trips and...
That's what I was trying to ask about, is how much per trip is there?
Up for...
Well, if we're just doing open tops now, a couple of larger jobs.
Yeah, you're, and I didn't get the actual tonnage. I don't remember off the top of my head. But typically, with a demo slash bulky type of a can, when you throw that stuff in there, again, airspace and stuff, you'll be lucky to get five tons. I know some communities were trying to pack it down a little bit, like Mako. And I warn them against it because they don't want to damage our equipment. Then the town will be buying us a new box. But if they gently pack it down, you could probably get six, maybe seven tons. With something like this, it's a three-to-one compaction ratio. Again, some of it's still fluffy, you get a mattress.
Okay, that's why you're dissipating that.
No, but I mean, even though mattresses, the springs, that pre-crusher will break some of those springs, so that will compact a little bit. So the weights will vary depending on what's being placed in there. But I'd say you could average anywhere from eight to 12 tons. If not more, depending on the material, the composition. Now, if you get a lot of wood and something's broken down, fill that up.
We can probably, by increasing the weight of the, the weight of the whole per trip, almost to double the same, comp trips, basically, almost in half. Isn't that the way of...
Say that.
And you'd be cutting down on the regular garbage that comes in because a lot of that wooden that we throw already in there.
Yeah, that's true, Ron.
So there would be less trips too. I don't think you'd have to make the two trips that you do now on a Tuesday because we have that pressure.
Just looking to see if I had your tonnage. Let's end this study.
We'll pay in 120, 130.
Yeah, I just want to see what you're averaging per haul. And at the top of my head, I would say anywhere from two and a half to three and a half, maybe four. Not getting very much in there because of just the composition and how it's placed in there. It's, it's the obvious truth with bulkies, it's tough for...
If they fill, if they fill that 30-yard can with shingles, which doesn't happen, but I'm sure they, there's been times where probably added a third full to a half full.
Yeah, and then we come, I mean, if that 30-yard was full with shingles, then we have another issue, we're over the DOT weight for the road. So we gotta be cognizant of that as well. Same thing, if we find out that where that box, if you end up going with this, great. If you don't, that's fine. But if you went with this and we have that compaction, the pressure up, that we're getting, you know, 18, 19 tons in there, we gotta come back and lower the pressure because that's too heavy. You know, my truck, when he picks it up, the front wheels will probably come off the ground. So, again, that's all...
Truck's a lighter, depends on how much they can hold.
Exactly.
I think the part that I like about it is a lot of times if two guys break down on the road or something happens, they don't show up. The thing is packed. I don't want to have to close the gate. I can send them right over there and we can crush it right in there.
It's a backup, and I would use it as a backup. This is intended, and as you read through the brochure that I handed out, it's intended to take bulky stuff and compact it. And this is an industrial type of a piece of machinery. I haven't, this is the first one really that I've talked about. I've talked to a couple of small towns about it, but they didn't go with it. They just, nah, nah, I don't want to spend money.
You've got some in operation out there somewhere.
I don't have any in the area that I manage, which is our Rochester Halling District and the state of Maine. There are some in Massachusetts and, again, a lot of these for manufacturing. You can see right on the brochure there, they crush barrels and stuff.
I'd like to hear what towns, towns or facilities that own them are, you know, they're really worth their time and stuff.
I can make some phone calls tomorrow with some of my counterparts that maybe is in the Massachusetts area. And see if they have any, first off, municipalities that may use this. If not, maybe commercial or industrial type customers.
What brought this up about getting one of these is because we were shut down up there and we were waiting for Grady to come and fix that hole that had broke underneath there, so here we was packed. And if we'd had something like that, we could have just switched the cars right over there and crushed it.
So would it go, you know, like bulky stuff now, Ron? In that spot, where you don't even pack up and it's over underneath that roof right there? Is that where...
All the demo goes over there, and a lot of it's the smaller. It's cheaper for us to throw it right in the can and crush it right there because every time one of those demo is filled, then we have to call them and it costs us quite a bit.
Yeah, we don't really pay tonnage, we just pay in square meters or a hall.
So I just thought it was a good idea for you guys to mull over and see what you think. And I'll call back on it.
And my apologies on the timeframe, like you disconnect there and we finally get in touch. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
We, I see $50 a month for open containers. We only pay once.
Fifty per, per open-top container, yeah.
We only pay once.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's for, I think, and I waved it on a couple of them, I believe, too.
Yeah, right. And while you're here, Pete, I'm sure you didn't forget, but nothing's happened up there to fix those things that were broken. You only called, you remember you came down and...
Did you, Grady was there. Did you show Grady when he was there?
Grady, Grady knows it, and you know it, and your big boss came with you. And you wrote it all down, but you haven't heard nothing.
I'll call Grady, and if he knows, he's the one that would dispatch it.
If we break down, if that thing breaks, then...
Yeah, we're talking about the lip on, and then the chute system on the other.
And on the back, the welding and so on and so on. And also, I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but you were gonna send somebody over to clean underneath there too.
Should have done that.
And we wanted to get that done for a cold weld okay.
Both MS, MSW and single stream?
What's that underneath, Ronnie, the compactor that's out?
I can't hear you.
Where was that? What, clean underneath where?
Underneath here, it piles up after a while. If somebody comes in...
Before we diaper it.
Underneath the machine itself.
When they, they leave some garbage, and when they pack the box, they compress it.
Oh, I see, okay.
And when we pull the can away from the actual compacting unit, and before we put the, what we call a diaper on it, the carpet, and some stuff leaks out, they try, the drivers are usually pretty good, you know, can't get everything.
The one that came, uh, let's see, the one that came Wednesday, it was a new guy. He did an excellent job. He cleaned underneath there. Took him a little while, but he got it all good and clean. And we all commented how clean the guy left it. But, and only that, we don't see any rats or anything up there, so I want to make sure that that's cleaned underneath there so that we don't get any rats.
Just, I can get raccoons, scum, you name it, so. But it's, again, basically a compactor that's real beefy. And how it really works, you can read through it. It says, there's a gate that is down, a heavy steel door. The ram pushes against that, that just, that basically crunches it. Then the gate can be lifted up and then pushed in, and so it's...
Do you have to do the operation yourself? You have to turn the switch for the...
Yeah, there's ocean requirements that we need to follow.
Yeah, but what I mean is, okay, we get some, we bring the gate down. We compress it. And we pull the plunger back, pick up the gate, push it in. Just like the other, just like the sign that where you were, same thing.
Well, it's a whole extra motion. And you're crushing it, and then the pusher is in the...
I, and don't quote me, I'm not 100% sure because I haven't really installed one of these and seen one actually fully working. But with the technology...
Is it possible for us to go and see one in operation somewhere?
Yeah, if it's somewhere close, I'm gonna find out tomorrow if we have anyone around. It'd be real nice if it was like just two towns over. But I'm not aware of any off the top of my head, and I could be wrong.
Either if we have a bit of a ride to afternoon.
Yeah, I'm sure.
But even this in the mass wouldn't be bad.
Okay, I'm sure if this company or, I know if it's a municipality or a heartbeat, but if it's a company, I'll...
Or something it may.
But with the technology power it is, I think it's, once you cycle it, it crushes. I think it does it automatic, I believe, and it can be set up that way. But I can confirm that with Grady in our operations folks.
I'm ready for my circle. Can I go?
I think we have a question from the audience.
Yes, so, hi Pete, I don't know if you remember me from last year, but...
Yes.
We had quite a discussion last year about recyclables. But anyway, I was looking at my tape from last year to prepare for tonight's meeting. And I noticed that the town's contract with Waste Management expired on September 30th.
That was renewed, right, it was renewed last February.
It was, it was already renewed before it expired. So would the prices still be the same then, $129.94, including transport and disposal, at a plus $50 a month, one-time fee? That's still the same?
Yes, I didn't have that in front of me, but yeah.
Basically, give or take a couple of pennies. So back on the 22nd, when Ronnie had come in and you guys had talked about purchasing a compactor at that time, you had said that it was cheaper for the town to rent a compactor, an additional compactor, than it was for us to buy it. Because you weren't really sure that we were gonna need it. So you were talking about if we went with that option to rent it first to see if we really used it, because $50,000 to $70,000 in case we needed is a lot of money. You know, like for a backup, is a lot of money. And in a town where we can't buy a fire truck, it's a whole heck of a lot of money that's unbudgeted. And do you still feel that strongly about renting versus purchasing?
It's two sides to every story, right? There's, when you buy it, you own it.
And you're responsible for maintenance?
Everything.
Yeah.
If you have people on site to do it, great. Typically with that type of machinery, they don't have the tools or knowledge really to fix. Some of it's simple, some of it's not. When you rent from Waste Management, well, you get PMs annually for maintenance. When it goes down, you call and we dispatch them. Usually 90% of the time it's one of our guys. But we have so many pieces of equipment in the field, I'd have to hire a small army of mechanics just to go on service calls. So it's cost-effective for us to sub some of that work out, and we do that as well. We've had Atlantic Leasing of the world come up here and we just, again, it's the empire.
Yeah, it's just a subcontract.
We sub it out sometimes.
So my other question was, you had talked about purchasing a box, you know, the boxes versus, you know, staying with our contract with Waste Management for the boxes. And you had said that if we had a demo, that was really ignorant, but if you had a demo crusher and you started packing it into the box and you pushed a hole through it, we're responsible for that, right? And the boxes cost about between $6,000 and $14,000, depending on the...
Size.
Size and shape of it, yeah.
Yes and no.
So we're looking at a lot of money.
Yeah, it is. And again, as I mentioned when I was coming in, I'm here because the town asked me to come in because of just the circumstances. So, believe me, if the town goes with this, great. If they don't, great. I mean, I like, I'm here to answer questions and provide alternates. This is expensive, very expensive piece of machinery. As I said earlier, it's a beefed up compactor that will reduce, in theory, the number of hauls. But again, I say that, depends on what you put in there too, right?
Right, right. But you never know what people are gonna bring in.
Exactly. I mean, I looked when he's gone, but Ronnie knows really, and you may know what, you know, goes in there a lot. But, you know, when I looked in, I saw a lot of bulky stuff that could be broken down. Because I'm looking at it, and it's not just here. It's burrows of the world, the Barringtons, New Hammers, the Altons, all around.
I mean, I understand the concept of it. I guess my bottom dollar question is, do you think it's going to be cost-effective for the town with maintenance, with having an additional person to look after it, with being responsible for the boxes now if we own the machine? Do you think it's a cost-effective option to purchase it rather than to rent it? Because it didn't last yet.
I personally, in putting my city council hat on for the city of Rochester, New Hampshire, and if I had to make that decision, I wouldn't buy one, I'd rent it.
Thank you.
That's me. That's not my decision.
I'm not, I'm not gonna vote to buy one. I'm gonna vote to rent.
I have a question. The $129 that you put, that's the per-haul fee. In addition, it would be whatever the tonnage is, but let's assume the $129.94 per ton. Oh, that's per ton. What is the haul?
That number is what we, I mean, some communities break it out. And some, this community, ever since I've been managing this account, 10-plus years now at least, we have what we call a transportation, or a T&amp;D number, Transportation Indisposal.
So it's 129.
It's combined.
So it's $129 per ton regardless of how many trips. So it would remain $129 a ton even if we reduced the number of trips by two to three times? So there's no cost savings there? Okay, that's what I was, I was trying to do a real quick, down and dirty cost-benefit analysis, but there is none in, you save no money by reducing the number of trips.
Well, it depends on if you increase the tonnage. It's gonna be almost a wash, really. I mean, because you're increasing your tonnage, which you would have had in there.
Per trip.
Per trip.
Per trip, but overall, your tonnage, let's assume that overall your tonnage remains basically the same. It might, as Ronnie was saying, you might put a little more into that bin than you do now. But overall, your total tonnage moved is not gonna change significantly. You'll reduce the number of trips, but your dollars won't change as a result of reducing...
That tonnage, whatever, if it's five tons of load, five hauls a month.
So there's no cost savings there? Is there cost savings elsewhere?
In this respect, we get a box, we put mattresses and box springs in it. And when the box is full, it doesn't weigh that much, but we have to pay the fee.
You pay a $129 per ton, whether it's one ton or five tons.
If we put that in the compact dump, we'd save a trip.
But you don't pay for the trip?
That's what we're trying to find out, is do you, are we correct? You don't pay for the trip?
You, it's all, it's one number.
So it's $129 per ton, whether you got one ton in the bin or eight tons in the bin?
So if I take two tons to the dump, to you, in one trip, using the compactor, stuff it all in there, or five trips, I'm still paying the exact same dollar amount for those two tons. Correct? It doesn't matter whether I've got 10 trips with mattresses or one trip with mattresses. It doesn't matter.
It's the same, it's a T&amp;D number, Transportation Indisposal number. Now, if it were, if it were broken out, right? If you had your haul, which a lot of communities do, have a haul charge and your disposal.
Then it might be...
Then you would see, hey, we got five, you know, five hauls a month at three tons. Let's go twice or once at X, there's your savings.
Right, that's where...
And I'm just saying, $70,000 is a deposit on a $350,000 fire truck, you know?
Again, I'm just presenting what I was asked to present.
And if I might say something? If we were to mix, I'll use shingles, because everybody recognizes what they have. If we were to get your mattress box half-full and then dump a couple loads of shingles on top of that, we're gonna save a trip there. And that's it.
Yeah. I mean, it is a good, it is a good piece of equipment and, again, has its use. Again, obviously, town decision, and tough decision to make because it's a lot of money. But I'm sorry.
No, Chip, I think you have a question.
Well, it was, it's kind of a good point, if nobody's really interested in buying it. But if they were to buy it, is there, can they get a service contract from you guys as well? Or is that something the town would have to go out and... Because the town doesn't have a maintenance department, so they'd have to get a service contract.
Yeah, I mean, really, I mean, they could call us now and we would come and fix it. We would charge them parts and labor. Yeah, but yes, they could do that.
We all own that equipment.
Yeah, the stuff in that equipment, yeah, the stuff of the...
The thing, if they were to buy this.
If they were to buy this.
You'd have to, right. The smart thing would be to get a service contract because you can't service it yourself.
The smart thing to do would be not to buy.
That's right, yeah.
You get a one-year manufacturing warranty. After that, then the town's responsible.
But even so, the rental on that smaller unit was $950 a month.
$9.45.
$9.45.
It's expensive.
It's not business, convenience is more important.
Right. It's just convenience and backup.
$50,000.
They, they don't give those...
They just give it each and away.
No, it's expensive, they really are. And a brand-new regular compactor that you have at the transfer station now, something like, that's a two-yard breakaway, that's probably $22,000, depending on the bells and whistles.
How much do we pay a month for those?
Oh, I don't know.
$200 to a pack is a...
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a lot less than $950.
Right, but that includes, you know, if it breaks, we're fixing it. It could be, you know, a $2,000 rim, we're gonna fix it. You have to fix it. We're gonna keep it up and running.
May I ask a question about the type of material that you put in? Concrete, somebody drops in something in there, what's gonna happen? Somebody drops in there all front steps.
It's not really gonna hurt, I mean, we don't want concrete in it.
Pieces of it, yeah.
Obviously, demo slash bulky has a definition. And I believe it's outlined in there. If we get a piece, a couple pieces here and there, you know, some people will throw and try to hide stuff and get rid of it. If it's in there, if it's all concrete, then we got a problem.
Because I know you, I see what you're crushing it with. You've got a wall there that you're crushing the stuff against before you push it in the can. So if you've got something...
Something like that could damage it.
Yeah.
Definitely could. But it's heavy duty, again, it's...
You gotta remember, we're supposed to see in those compactors where if they, you wonder how they do what they do, it's like this.
Is there room in the budget for $10,000 to $12,000 extra?
I haven't even looked that far, Chip. This was just brought up that we were, you know, interested in just kind of talk about it, throw it out there, so we haven't gotten that far to look at that yet either, so.
Is it a lease on the rental? Is it like a one-year rental or is it month by month or...
If they were to, if the town said yeah and they wanted to go there... It would be, yeah, it would be, you know, we rent it month, well, the term of the agreement is, what, five years, so...
Yeah, so it would be tacked on to our current contract for the remainder of the five years. So there's no, like, trial period, we can try it for a year and give it back, huh? No.
So you locked, we locked into it for a five-year period?
Yeah.
Were you able to do that? I thought we can only do contracts for three years.
Yeah, we've got an issue there.
Yeah, we do have an issue. I haven't even looked at this yet.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, but... So we couldn't try it for, so if we wanted to rent it, we couldn't rent it for six months to see how it went?
We're actually, we gotta buy it.
Because you're gonna buy that.
We gotta buy it, right?
Right.
And then if, oh, no, we don't want it, then we...
I don't blame them, just that's why I'm asking the question.
I have a fiduciary responsibility to my shareholders. It's like, hey, well, now I can't use this, guys. Thanks for the money, though.
So yes, so yes, the answer that we rented, we're renting it for five years, basically, is what you're saying.
At just under $1,000 a month?
It's just information. My personal feeling after the information is that, you know, I really don't see it in a budget and I don't see it in the near future. And if it's just for convenience, then I don't know if it's really worth us stepping up to taking that. So, I mean, that's, we really, we really have to dig into price per car. You know, if we're really not gonna save money doing it, then, I mean, how often do we get overflowed and...
Well, let me ask this. How about giving us a price on another compactor like we have? And what's the feasibility on you guys' end for us to just put out mattresses and other demo right into that one compactor?
Not, compactors like that, if you're a...
Would they end?
They won't, they won't, it doesn't have the compaction power to break up stuff that this is designed to do.
However, I was thinking about, I've seen quite a few cans filled. And I hope you'll see them on the other end getting emptied out. What I'm trying to say is, you mix it anyways. What if we threw everything in that compactor? We'd forget this mattress thing.
You mean just use it for the demo?
Use it for demo in general, throw in your mattresses mixed with this other heavy demo. What about getting it out of the can in the wintertime? I mean, that's always been a problem, freezing, deep freeze time, Christmas and later.
It happens, things do freeze in there. The beauty of where supposedly it was proposed, if it did go, is undercover, underneath that kind of an overhang.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's going to be somewhat, but you're going to get wind blown, snow, rain sometimes, go sideways.
We've had some, dead metal.
It's tough, but I mean, I have, I've seen thirty yards, open tops, that were left and then we tried to dump it and a lot of the stuff is frozen in there. You know, they.
And all the machines that dug them out.
Yeah, that's why I wouldn't want to work inside the landfill myself, but they have to, you know, they go in there and do what they can to get it out. Sometimes you have to wait.
But cost wise, if we were to do something like this, you had a can that was sticking, who gets to pay for it? Is that something you'd have to change charge back to us?
No, if it's in there, you know, you can take it out. Now, if we came back and it was still, right, when we go in, we go over the scale?
Yes.
Wait.
Yep.
Certified scale, we wait. Go, we dump the load, come back out. If there's stuff still in the can, well, it's going to be weighed going back out. So your tier weight is what the town pays.
Yeah, that, yeah.
So you're not going to pay for it until it comes out.
The ideal condition is a can comes out empty across the scale.
Sometimes, again, deep freeze and it gets real bitter cold and there's a lot of moisture that gets inside that can. It's going to be there until it warms up enough so we can get it out. You know, it's, they're not allowed to take a blowtorch or something and go in there and, you know, because they're on top of a big pile on that thing, so.
You'd probably still use excavators or a backhoe or an extender hoe on it if we were to.
Yeah, we've had guys.
Literally pull what you can out of the can.
We've had guys go in with, yeah, try to pound them with cameras or sledgehammers. Right, so the great question, that does happen.
Another thought, you know, we decided to go down this road. Keep in mind, if it's on the other side now, we would always have to have somebody physically over there. There isn't always somebody physically over there, correct?
At least, at least run the compactor when it's full.
Yeah, because then you're going to have to make sure you have enough staff to cover all that too, to help and do that.
At least be able to run over there and run that compactor when it's full.
I worry about between people and just being a convenient, how often, you two can probably tell me, how often do we overflow that we have to shut it down at the transfer station? Or like trash, just a few times a year because of change of seasons or?
No, it happens quite often on Saturday.
Yeah.
If they're late and we've got extra garbage, we fill it right up. It happens, okay?
That's on the main screen.
But a breakdown, we have one screw a year.
That's on your level of garbage. This stuff here, we're talking about the demolition.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, as far as, like Ronnie was saying, it could be used in the case of a breakdown for the regular trash or the recycle. But there was also a comment about, or you have an extra thirty yard sitting there in case of an emergency, in case of overflow, and you use that, which has got to be a lot cheaper than nine hundred and forty-five dollars a month, to have an empty thirty yard sitting there. If the recycled compactor breaks or the regular trash compactor breaks, there's someplace to put that trash. It's, you don't have to shut down, or the same with the demo. I mean, if you're overflowing, you have someplace in the case of an emergency. I.
It's a good point.
I guess we can, we can talk about it all over.
Ask Ronnie.
What I'll do for the board is, per your request, I'll see if I can find something, you guys can take a look.
Yeah, it's free for us, absolutely.
I'd like to talk to somebody that's had one in operation.
Again, like I said, it's a great piece of equipment, but it has its uses. And, you know, if a town or a company wants something like this, well, they're expensive, but there are benefits you use too, and.
Everything's got its benefits.
Perfect, well, thank you.
My pleasure. Any other questions?
If we're given your big enough headache yet, Pete.
No, it's my job.
I'm still waiting for recycling day that you promised us in April. You said you were going to come down and talk to people about recycling in April, and it's our toll bill.
I've been to, oh my God, this year alone, I've been to at least fifteen different events where, like, and actually, I'm going to East Kingston on the election day to go to their election, have a.
Yeah, but living lives matter.
I will, you know, I can make a point on a Saturday, if I come up, set up, it's getting cooler now, but I come up and kind of just, I have a display that I bring with me and it's kind of a quiz. A lot of people think, oh, I know what to recycle and what not to recycle, and I just have some common ideas.
I didn't, when you taught me, I was amazed, absolutely amazed at what you cannot recycle. Because I thought, oh, yeah, that's good, it's paper.
And the issue with recycling, I know I'm off on a tangent, I can.
I know, I know, we do too, about an hour at the festival.
But just because a piece of plastic or something has the little recycling Mobius sign or the symbol on the back, doesn't mean it's recyclable. And people, why is a symbol on there? The FTC requires companies that manufacture whatever, Styrofoam cups, perfect example. Put all the, is that number five or six, whatever's on there. Styrofoam's not recyclable.
Right.
There's no market for it.
That's correct.
And so, but they use, the FTC requires them to use, when they're making that cup, made from some type of recycled product, some plastic or whatever. Because Styrofoam is plastic, it's blown up right from there, so. So that's what we require, so once they do that, that has recyclable material made from it, put that symbol on there. So this is a bigger issue than just what any company can pick up. This is a federal issue that they need to mandate, in my opinion, and that, you know, you as a manufacturer are responsible for that packaging of your product from birth to grave.
Right.
From cradle to grave, you need to be responsible, should have an end of life and a proper disposal of it. But again, I'm preaching to the choir, but.
Well, I thank you, but I'm looking forward to when you come because I learned so much.
Again, I'll let the board know if you don't want me to comment, it's fine on me. But I'd love to go just to help people, educate them on recycling.
Absolutely, that's a great thing.
Yeah, and it helps us too because we get cleaner loads. Because the recycling market right now is, it is crap, it's very volatile.
That was her, not me.
It's very volatile, so.
No, I'm just listening to a news article about it.
Well, thank you very much for being honest and answering our questions.
My pleasure.
It's nice to hear the answers.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, have a great night.
Thank you, same here. Great seeing you. Nice seeing you.
I have a question about just putting up there.
No, go ahead, Rachel, please.
Have a great night, folks.
Thank you.
You too, for seeing us.
Good night, thank you.